It is six o'clock and this is the Town of Trophy Club and we welcome you that are here in the chambers with us and also those who are joining us online. This is a workshop between the Town Council and the Parks and Recreation Board. August 25th, six o'clock and we have a quorum and we also have two council people Stacy Bauer and Jeff Beach, online please, you'll see them up in the corner. You have to get your mic. So we are so thankful that you're here and this is a workshop that is with the Parks and Rec Board and you'll see them sitting up here in the front. And actually y'all have a quorum as well, so you're good to go. And you know, I just got to tell you, this is the best board. For several years, they have been contemplating, talking about, listening to, making decisions on the pool in Trophy Club and all of the other issues with it. And we just, myself and I know the council, thank you for your participation and your continuous work in this effort. And combined workshops are really a great way for the collaboration between board and council. And you hear me speak to it a lot, but actually it's the residents who go to the board, the board listens to the residents, the board makes recommendations based on that, sending it to the council and that's, and so they have the connection with the community and we really encourage residents to get to know your boards, use your boards, make recommendations, come and see and learn and participate with the boards. Prior to this workshop tonight is each one, the board members and the council members all received the very same packet of information preparing us for this workshop. We also had the opportunity to meet one-on-one with either Brandon or with Chase where we received the options that we're looking at tonight as well as we had the opportunity to ask questions. And I happen to know that people continued working all weekend because we kept getting notes, oh, we need this information, we need this. So there was continuous interest in making the right decision tonight with the right information. But before we get into the options, I want us to hear from three sources. The first one will be the Park and Recreation Board and this is really easy peasy for you guys. In front of you, you have a card and hopefully you have something to write with. And I would like for you to very quickly during the next couple of minutes because they'll be talking, I want you to write down of the four options, they're in front of you if you don't know what they are, write down your choice. You don't have to put your name and then you're going to slide it down and Chase is going to pick it up, okay? So if you will do that and in the meantime Chase will come up and speak to us reviewing the handout that we received regarding community feedback. Thank you Chase.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excited to be up here and talk about the pool and where we are. And I want to back us up just real quickly. I know this has been going on for years and topics about how to improve the pool and what we'd like to see. But over this last year, when we brought Park Hill on, we did a community engagement as we started down this next phase of development. And I want to highlight some of those things. One of these approaches was not only an online survey, but we also went to the pool and talked to the participants that were there during the swim team time as well as open swim and after work hours to try and get all the users of what they, when they come to the pool and what they would like to see. So this first little section is talking about the demographics. A couple of things that I want to point out to that is as you can see, 99% of the respondents are Trophy Club residents that we spoke to. I do believe that we had two to five guests that were visiting that came in as a guest pass that also shared some of their information. And then out of those, 28% of those are involved within our swim team. So as we look at all that, you know, some of the big things that I do want to point out is in that word bubble, things that spoke to them about what the community pool is to them as, you know, friends, teams, slides, lagoons, all these fun things of being able to say, you know, they're, that's where they want to be, they want to enjoy those things. So out of that with the community feedback, I want to bring attention just down, there's a lot of information here, but out of all the site enhancements as well as aquatics enhancements, the top, top, top five in order was the body slide, group shade, lounge area, sun deck, public cabanas and play structure. And when we're talking about a play structure on the options, you'll be able to see under the shade in the kiddie pool, that is where the forecasting the play structure be placed in water for that like two to six-year-old range. And so it just talked about, you know, existing conditions that we have, but we really enjoyed our time out there. I know a lot of the council and park board also joined us to be able to talk about that. So from that is where we get the design photo and layout was a total of about eight months of work with Park Hill and the WTI and the design team to get based off the community feedback and everything that we had heard and responded to is where we got this graphic. And that's where we developed the construction documents to go out to RFP for a general contractor. We advertised an RFP for a general contractor and we had two groups that bid on the project. Knowing just the environment that we're in with the construction and just political environment, we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to get the best possible price for those things that we were looking at. And so a lot of those things that we talked about was what are our base needs and that's where we get the base bid at. And then what are those added amenities that the community spoke about? And that's what those add alternates are. When we got down to it, the FAIN group was the low bid, but also I want to point out was the group that had all the denims checked and all the documents in there to have a full complete package. Their complete package came in at $2,759,918. As we know, that was over budget. And so this allowed us to open discussions with them of, you know, let's develop some options, but then let's also look at our finances and see. And so I'm going to turn that over to Brandon to provide a little more information on the financial side of that.
So council, as you're aware, the remaining budget for this project in the original $4 million, $4 million allocation from several years ago is 2.185 million, right? 2.185 million is the remaining budget for this. So we have several packages that will bring this into budget for you tonight. We have four options for you to consider. One of those options is to go over budget on the project if the council should decide to do that. That amount, the amount that is available if we go over budget. So the original $4 million was allocated from our 2021 bond sale. Okay, so and it's, and all that $4 million is there available for this project. And we've already spent phase one, right? Phase one spent something, so phase two, the remaining part of this is 2.185 for the construction contract. If we, if we do want to go over budget, there is currently $3 million of unallocated funding from our 2023 bond sale that can be used for that purpose for it. So sometimes, you know, when you're considering the idea of, you know, do you want to expand the project to be able to do, you know, more things in it? If you're looking for an additional funding source, there is funding available in the 2023 bond series for that. There's currently $3 million of unallocated. Any amount of that could be allocated to this project at the council's direction. Any questions on funding part of, just that funding element of what's available and what's not for this project?
I just have a question. In, should we choose to use that 400, what does that do to other priority project?
So as of right now, we have not allocated any projects for that money. So all the current projects will continue to move forward. The, as we anticipate the future for our capital projects, we are anticipating future bond sales to be able to issue those bonds for additional street and sidewalk improvements that need to happen throughout the community. The $3 million that's there right now, one of the things that we need to think about is after the completion of the Parks Master Plan, it was kind of, it's a bucket of money that can help us to get started on some of the elements that are brought up during the Parks Master Plan. That can be from anything from looking at the activity center and looking at that can be to restoring some of our bathrooms at different facilities. It can be for various options that can be done there. So I don't want to say what it's going to be used for, but it is a $3 million bucket of money that could be used for that purpose should the council decide.
Perfect, thank you.
Brandon?
One question, who had the question?
I do.
Okay. Jeff, go ahead.
Was not some of that bond money that you're talking about from '23 also allocated to the Bobcat area improvements like perhaps the roundabout at Trophy Club and Bobcat?
So it's a great question. The two projects that are funded, that are allocated right now in the 2023 bond series, one of them is the pickleball project and the other one is the, hold on, is it Bobcat? I'm looking at.
Random.
I believe it's Bobcat is the other one, right? I believe that two, yeah, so it is currently already slated for funding for those two projects. Bobcat, all the improvements along there with the roundabouts and expansion of the lanes on Bobcat, about 2.5 million and then the pickleball project as well was the other project that's funded from the 2023 bond issuance.
So the available $4 million then is not getting into either of those two projects?
It is not available, $3 million is not getting into either one of those projects, correct?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. Other questions on this particular question?
Oh, thank you, Robert.
So the funds, whichever project we pick for the pool, if there's money left over, is it going to stay within, is it still going to be allocated or directed towards maybe future pool enhancements or do you end up losing that come the next budget year?
Yeah, so there, it could be either one of those things typically when a project is completed, we'll go ahead and empty out the account and put it back into available fund balance in our capital projects fund and use it for a future project. That's the typical practice. What project that is, we would have to decide and figure out what to do. The council could say that they want to leave the remaining funding available for other improvements in the pool or other projects, things like that as well. So it really is up to the discretion of the council about how to handle it. Typically you're just going to let it, you know, just empty the account, put it back into fund balance in the capital projects fund and then reallocate it for a different project.
Okay, thank you. Chase, you can come back and did you get the cards from your board members?
So if you've written down an option and then we'll use this for discussion, so hurry in, write down.
We did.
Right ahead of it. Okay.
I got them going early on.
So before we look at that, just so that the public and those in the audience, because we knew that with this project being over budget, we needed to find a way to look at cutting that cost down to make sure that we're as close as we can to that number. And so I, this is just some praise for Park Hill as well as the FAIN group that over about, I want to say eight days, we worked and looked at numbers and FAIN group really responded with coming back with these options. And so we have these four options and I'll just run through these options and then we can answer questions. But option one is what we call the no frills or the, I like to refer to it as the sunburn option, that we are providing all the amenities of a new kiddie pool with a shade structure over the play feature, which is featured here right at 10. But, and then we will, it has an option to do the slide tower. Now this slide tower, I will make mention in all the options except for option two, will be plumbed for two slides. We did in this phase remove the single drop slide that saved a cost of roughly 90,000 on that. So that's why there's a red blank over the red slide because that is removing that slide. But in the future, all that we would need to do is purchase the actual slide itself and have it installed. The pump, the piping, everything will be built with the feature there. And then it's removing all the cabanas and shade structures around the sides. Here we have current rectangular shade that goes between the lap pool and the kiddie pool. It would just remove those individual 12, eight by eight, 12 by 12 personal cabanas. And then on the east side of the pool, it would, we would not be touching any of that current grass area. So really this is your one slide and your improvements to the kiddie pool. That one came in to 2,64,455, so about 21,000 under budget and that also includes the contingency. Option two is looking at doing all the improvements, but removing the slide structure completely. And so that would be the pool with the aquatics features and all the shades as well as the shade improvements to the east side. That one came in at 1.8 million, 3,201, about 282,000 under budget, contingency included. Now option three, I will give credit to our rec superintendent because we were sitting in a meeting, Brandon and I kind of thinking about ideas and what we could do and she brought up the idea of not tearing out the current kiddie pool and doing, having money in there to do some of the repairs because there are some mechanical issues that we need to take care of in there. So when you look at the line item of the leisure pool, there's about $25,000 in there for pool repairs that we would have to make. But the shade structure would be included on that one as well as all the additional site amenities and that would include one slide in that structure. But it would keep the remaining kid pool shape and in the future, we would need to look at allocating some funds to replaster and do some other upgrades that weren't identified necessarily for the mechanical fixes, which is what that $25,000 is allocated for. So that one came in right close to as option three at 1,804,746, about 280,000 under budget contingency included. And just as a note, the shade between the kiddie pool, this is read it out, but that would be leaving the existing rectangular shade structures that we have there currently. And so it would just not be putting in the personal cabanas that the community had spoken about.
Chase, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So this option, option three?
Yep.
Is 280,000 under budget?
Correct.
Okay. One slide?
One slide.
Did you say that the removal back in the beginning under option one of one slide was a savings of about 90 grand?
Correct.
So if you put the second slide back into this hypothetically, there'd be 90 grand more and still under budget? Is my math right?
Roughly, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Chase, would you describe what you mean by remove the kiddie pool?
Yeah.
In other words, I'm thinking you were tearing out what's there now and replacing it.
Correct.
Rather than, just quickly describe it.
Yep, so in option one, two, and four, it is demolishing the current kiddie pool because I, if you're familiar with fidget spinners, that's what I call our current kiddie pool because it has kind of three stems that come out and we have two beaches and then we have a little kid's slide that comes down in between those two points. So this would be completely tearing out and rebuilding a brand-new pool for the kids, which would be this new shape of, you know, smaller at the deeper end and then it'd have a bigger zero entry beach with the play feature. In option three, that play feature that is currently under the shade would not be replaced. We do currently have one water feature, which is a mushroom that would remain in there. It just, all the current play features in there would remain, which is that water mushroom.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, and option four is the closest that we can get to what the community spoke about, about wanting the body slide, the shade structures, play features, cabanas, things like that. And so to get it down from the 2.7 million, removing that one single drop slide that we could do in the future. And then also those tables, shades, they're not just a picnic table with an umbrella that pops up, they actually are secured to the ground, things like that. As well as those cabanas would just remain that rectangular shade here in the middle, but we would be able to do everything else. And so that would be a whole site improvement. That one, keeping everything, but it removing the cabana areas and the tables brings that to 2,481,482, which is that right close to that 395,000 over budget and that does include the contingency there. So those are the four options and speaking with the mayor, what we wanted to do was with these cards, just to get the discussion going, we were going to read out and then we can speak to these options. Currently we have one vote for option two, one vote for option three, and four votes for option four. So we will open it up to the park board. If you guys have things that you'd like to share and talk through, the floor is yours.
Oh, yeah, okay, well, I'll get started. I don't need the microphone, it's fine, I'm loud enough. They need to hear you on, on, on.
Oh, they do.
It's picking you up though.
Let me move it over. There we go. All right. Well, I'll kick us off. So I picked option four and a couple reasons. The number one reason is this was the overwhelming response from our community with these amenities. And I feel like, obviously we all know when you wait on a project or you wait to order something on Amazon or anything like that, things get more expensive, especially in construction. So if we go with option one or two, I do feel like it would, we would be missing an opportunity on costs. It's going to cost us a lot more in the long run. And I do feel like knowing that we have funds that we could pull from for that overage and every aspect of this facility on what we've talked about will be touched, it'll look like a completed project. And I do feel like the community has asked for this for years, including in the Star Telegram four years ago showing slide towers, which got the conversation really going. So I do feel we owe it to our community to do, number one, do it right. Number two is to fulfill what the community has asked for, which is our these top five priorities. Hi Gary.
Just to add to what the chairperson said, I totally agree with the cost escalation as being an issue. Obviously council, city manager has the challenge of figuring out how to spend that $3 million and prioritize that. It sounds like that could be going towards Parks and Recreation amenities. To add to the amenities within this facility, I think it'd be a good investment from that perspective as opposed to delaying that and going back in a couple of years where it may cost 75% more, 100% more, whatever the cost is going to be. If you look at option one, from my perspective, there's a lot being omitted from that even though there's a slight savings, but for a total of a little over $400,000, you're getting just about everything that the community asked for. I think it's a good investment from that perspective and I would encourage the council to consider that.
Option one?
Option four.
Option four, okay.
Option one, if you look at it, there's not a lot there. I mean, shade is a big issue in the park system these days with, you know, sun exposure, all that and just the heat, it's an issue. And if we don't provide that shade, people aren't And if we don't provide that shade, people aren't going to want to come anyways. So it's a must needed. I mean, years ago, we didn't have shade over playgrounds, now it's almost a standard that's provided.
Gary, would you please tell us what your position is so that we know that you're speaking with authority?
Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Denton.
Okay, so he is purchasing this kind of equipment for your parks, the shade?
That's correct. I mean, it's a challenge that we have. I mean, balancing what we can do with our resources every day is a challenge. And picking and choosing how we balance that and spread that cost out to the community as a resource is an ongoing challenge.
Thank you, thank you. Other board, park board?
I don't know if this thing works or not.
Yep, it's worked.
How's been the attendance, if you will, at the, you know, swim park this summer? Has it been up, has it been down?
Yeah.
I know, obviously, the city's going to subsidize most of this, which is not going to be a cost-revenue, cost-neutral proposition. But, you know, I look at, I voted for option three, and the reason I did was because I'm looking at two hundred and eighty thousand of additional money that we can use maybe to add that other slide, you know, that ninety thousand dollar slide, spruce it up, make it look, you know, brand-new, and still come under budget. And still have a couple hundred thousand left if we, as we get through the project, realize, oh, hey, we might want to add this, this is a good idea, someone comes up with that type of stuff.
Yep.
But, I mean, are more people using the facility this year than last year? Are our kids getting, they're getting older, obviously, but is a lot of younger kids using the pool as opposed to the older kids? Do we have a demographic on that?
Yeah, so we thought those questions might come up. And caveat on this is to directly look at our attendance numbers directly tied to our revenue. This is only the attendance during open swim. So this isn't counting our swim lessons, our month, I mean, our daily swim team practice that goes from 5:00 AM to 8:30 every day. So this is not counting theirs. But this year, total attendance, we are up about six hundred attendance from last year. So we have twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-one. And then our rental data is also up. Like, we also opened up Splash Pad Pavilions. We started tracking child day passes that are the kids that are free, which last year, that, we only had, well, tracked sixteen. But this year, we had a total of two hundred and twenty-seven. And our Splash Pad Pavilion, we've had twenty-five rentals of those, which is a hundred dollars for two hours. And a lot of those kids under, those free kids are coming in with those pavilion rentals. And so just looking at those that are coming during the open hours, that's roughly where we are, is twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-one, which is about five hundred more than what was last year. And then that doesn't include our swim team coming in, using it daily, which we have a total of three hundred and one hundred and seventy-five swim team members. And then our, also our camps come over and use the pools two days a week, which is about a hundred and forty, counting the counselors, a week in addition of attendance there.
Chase, you don't have that on the slide, right?
No, that was a question that just came up, and so we pulled that. And I have another copy here.
I got a question on that. So when we say eighteen rentals, we had eighteen rentals in twenty-four, and we had forty-two in twenty-five, is that correct?
Total, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And so rental revenue for last year was ninety-four, nine thousand and forty-four, this year is ninety-five, sixty?
Yep.
So is it fair if I take nine thousand and forty-four divided by eighteen, and that gives me per rental revenue? Is that a fair statement?
Well, we also, the rentals are divided up. So full facility, like last year, we had two, which was seven hundred dollars for two hours, versus this year, we had four. And then the Splash Pad are at a hundred. So if, if you did that division, it would give an average of it. But I would also encourage looking at those individuals because the Splash Pad Pavilion rental, we also rent during open hours, where the full facility, you have to either do it two hours before we open or two hours after. So it's not open to the public.
And then total membership sold actually declined, is that right? From seven fifteen to six fifty-five?
Correct. And when we looked at that, looking at our adult day passes, I think that is kind of, we've had about the same amount, but I think some have, whether children have exited and gone to college, that maybe they opted for just the daily passes. Because if you look at our adult day passes, last year was eight hundred and ninety-one, and this year's two thousand one hundred and twenty-five. And when we were looking at that data, that was one, one thought we had was, you know, it doesn't necessarily make sense to do a family-of-four pass versus, you know, if my wife and I are just going to go three or four times and just pay the four dollars instead of the membership.
We know that the pool will not pay for itself. We know that. However, if you look at your budget and you look at where revenue comes into the town, comes from tax, property tax, it comes from fees, it comes from three million dollars worth of sales tax. And do y'all know that the pools generate two hundred thousand dollars for the town? Now, it's not going to cover, but think about it in terms of one of the only revenue resources for our town. Correct me, am I correct, Brandon, am I leading you wrong?
Well, no, we have other revenues.
Well, yeah, of course.
But yes, it is one of the, a pretty good one for the parks.
Yeah, so, so it's not going to cover the pools, but we are getting as much as we can get at this current time with what we have.
And for a community our size, it is really an amenity because it provides that opportunity, not only for us to teach life skill of learning how to swim and provide these not only recreational opportunities, but these competition opportunities with the swim team. I do feel, out of all the communities that I've worked in, our pool has a very well-rounded approach with the Splash Pad and with our swim team and with these amenities, that it is a, it is truly a place that our community goes to to feel like they belong in Trophy Club and that one reason why they choose Trophy Club.
Bob, you asked that question.
You're right.
Does that answer your, does that answer your question?
About the numbers?
About the numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
What was, what was the reasoning for trying to ask from your point of view?
I was just wondering mainly if the usage was up this year over last year. Because to me, if it's down, and we're spending all this money to improve it, is it down because it needs improving or is it just down because people aren't using this pass, you know, the facility as much as they were last year?
Okay, thank you.
Well, I will answer that as well. I will make a comment because on this particular diagram, the rating is six point nine-ten. Right. Now, I wouldn't call that stellar.
Correct.
But it is attracting this number of people. So what might it be if we had an exceptional experience there at the pool that adds value and adds new features and shade? I'm, hey, I'm into shade. We all are, I'm sure, and I really appreciate hearing you, Gary, your comments on that. So when you look at this, this gives you some indication that there could be opportunity for more usage.
Sure.
As an honorary swim team member, that was one of the first things I asked about, is could we still hold swim meets with kind of using up the extra room? It sounds like there is a plan to kind of maybe expand some of that over in the Splash Pad area, still be able to do that. So I was glad to hear that. One observation I wanted to point out when comparing options.
Observation, kind of a couple, in comparing options three and four. You know, at initial glance, three seems like kind of the most fiscally responsible. But if you, if you look closer, there's some things, I'd call them risks, I don't know if they're real risks, but there's some things there hidden that could become problematic. First of all, you know, delaying kind of the inevitable upgrade of the kiddie pool. Like, we've all said that, you know, the longer you wait on stuff, the worse it gets. So that's one observation. And the second observation is, I understand there's, there's a grading concern that, you know, not upgrading that pool, they could get into the construction and find that there's a grading issue. And so that could, that could take away from the value of number three. So, you know, if you're eating into that, it's like, well, you know, what have you, what have you really gained with option three? I was a proponent of four, I think it's, you know, it is, it was a little bit over budget, but value-wise, at the end of the day, getting the community what they've asked for. I think that's, I think that's the number one thing.
And I'll just touch real quick on that grading concern because that is one of the construction risks of this option, is that when you don't replace the kiddie pool, you're going with the existing grading. And then if you grade the other areas that you can get the slide in there, right? You're matching kind of an area that hasn't been improved to an area that is being improved. And it will just, there might be some grading issues on there. If it were all done at one time, that would be resolved in the construction project.
Jeff, turn your name tag around so I can see it. I'm sorry? Turn your name tag around so I know.
Well, what if he forgets his name?
Okay.
Oh, no, you're good, okay. I know Dana could forget his name.
I thought that was for the people in the back, so they'd see our name, just like they see your name.
Good, good answer, Jeff. Are they finished?
I have one quick question. In regards to the grading, are there any subsurface geotechnical issues with the, with renovating or completely redoing the kiddie pool?
I am going to turn that over to our experts.
Not that we're aware of it this time, we've got the existing geotech and everything out there and everything seems to be in order.
I'd love to add the red slide back onto number four.
Are you going to be the first down that slide?
Oh, there we go.
Mayor, I sure would like to hear who voted number.
Well, I'd like to hear from Jeff and from Dana.
I agree with Jen that option four allows the community to see that there was work done with this project. You know, on phase one, I think there was probably feedback that what really happened, what occurred during phase one. I think phase two really shows that. And I think the decision-making that the board has used in the last couple of years has been very focused on what do, what are, what's going to attract future Trophy Club residents to come move here. And I think the investment in four will really sing true for those future Trophy Club residents.
So I voted for number two, Dennis, to answer your question. My reason for that is, as Chase pointed out, there were five main things that were the top of the chart. With option two, you get four of them, and it's under budget. One of those is the kiddie pool. I think that definitely needs to be done, and the shade structures, as everyone's talked about. The other thing with the shade structures is it offers more income. At least, they were supposed to be rentable, so the pool can make up some of its loss to the city. You also still get the pool use. I don't think a slide is a need, it is a desire. And there's a big difference between a desire and a need. Just like all of us that own homes, I mean, any kid could come in and say, hey, Dad, I want a car. Doesn't mean you buy it, that's a desire. You look at your budget, we budgeted the amount of money. This option two gives us a nice cushion of any kind of overages. It does do the grading that if in the future a slide becomes a need, that you could add it because it's already been graded. So it gives everything everyone wants except a desire. It gives a lot of need. It allows the pool to prove it can generate more money. And you can have the slide later, or they can go right down the road to Hawaiian Falls and pay the fee to go in Hawaiian Falls. Because we still need to talk about the fee for the pool entry to begin with.
Yes, and, yes.
And we keep avoiding that topic year over year.
That's your next project. You just don't know that.
Chase, on option two, if you eliminate the slide totally.
Yep.
Thinking, well, it'll come back later. The underground requirements, like swimming and stuff like that, are you tearing up everything to get to it?
So one of the things that we'll be doing, and James, correct me if I'm wrong, is in order to save costs for the slide, typically, if you create a new body of water, you have to have a new filter system as, because you're creating a new body of water. What we're doing is tying the slides over into the lap pool water system. So all the circulation for the slides, as well as the lap pool, will be on its current filter system, which has the capability of having those additions there. So what it will do is all the piping will be through this concrete to an inlet and outlet right here, well, close to right there in the deep end of the lap pool. And that is saving us significantly of creating its own body of water with an additional filter system, chlorine system, everything there.
So the answer to my question is no, you're not ripping everything up to redo it if you come back a few years because your plumbing system is already outside the concrete area, so does that, where you would be attaching a slide into.
Yes, to a point. I think.
Shaking his head back there.
Come on up.
Yeah, come on up, you guys are the experts.
I'm trying to understand what Jeff wants, but at the same time, if you come back in two years and do it and you have to rip up all the concrete, you just put the money into spending to do it.
He's installer, yeah, that's Fang.
I'm Larry Fraser with the Fang Group. So in option two, if you eliminate the slides, it will still need its supply lines somewhere, which will mean at some point, if you add, if you eliminate them both entirely, you will have to come back and take some deck out to get to those supply lines.
That's what I was trying to get to, you got demolition involved, okay, correct.
Thank you. Okay. Again, I go back to community input and what was one of the number one things people wanted. A slide, wasn't it?
Did the surveys have price tags on them? I've held my comment for a while. So I'd like to go ahead and get going on a few things. One, thank you, Gary, for mentioning shade. I wrestled a council in 2016 or 17 to get extra shade by the Splash Pad area. Shade is preeminent in the expanding the use and utility of the complex. And what Jen mentioned about putting things off, we can't defer the kiddie pool. That will just balloon. That's an established use, it gets a lot of usage. I was a big user of it for many, many years before my kids aged out of it. And then, for me, I do not believe we can go over budget. We are part of the way through a four-million-dollar project where we've already, our budget on this, Brandon, left in the two, in the four million was two point one and change, correct?
Correct.
So that means we've already spent almost two million. So we don't need to go over budget. And then obviously, we love community input, but they don't come with price tags when we do these surveys. And I'm pretty confident that the responses would shift and change if they had price tags on them. And the reason I know this, or believe this, is throughout all the years of interacting with people about the pool complex, I have had many conversations about shade, more than anything. I've had conversations about safety and cleanliness. I've never had anyone say, let's get a slide. It's one thing when someone comes to you out of their own ideation and says it'd be nice with this or that. It's another thing when you give people a menu and they start checking boxes. I support option two out of the options, but at the end of the day, I want us to be under or near budget and make sure we get the kiddie pool taken care of. Because that's, if it needs that treatment now, we need to go ahead and do it because by the time we get back around to it, it'll be thirty, forty percent more expensive. Also, option four is eighteen percent over budget. That's not a little over budget, that's a lot over budget. As an elected official, I'm not going to support being eighteen percent over budget on something that's coming out of something that started as four million dollars, so. As an elected official, I'm not going to support being 18% over budget on something that's coming out of something that started as $4 million, so.
Okay, I have a, I have a question on, um, number one. What, what's the increase in cost of a K, uh, the, uh, kiddie shade? What, what's the cost of a kiddie? It's $90,000?
The kiddie shade is right about $80,000.
Oh, $80,000?
Yes.
Okay, it would still go over budget, okay.
Yep.
Okay, uh, are there, uh, are we finished? Other comments from our, um, park board? Other comments? Y'all have comments? Steve?
Um, I do have comments. So I agree wholeheartedly with Ryland. I mean, we, we started with a budget of $4 million, which is a big ticket item. And being 18% over budget concerns me. He made the comment that I was thinking, that when you ask somebody, would you like A, B, or C? And A is Fleming's, and B is Meet You Anywhere, and C is Cracker Barrel, for example. Most, most people.
Pulling from the headline.
Most people will select A, right? With, when there's no cost associated with it, that's going to be the natural answer.
Well, I hate to interrupt you, Steve, but when we tell them how much it costs for us to do Cracker Barrel, they don't like that either.
Well, that's true, that's true. But being over budget concerns me. We have a budget for a reason, and I, I, I'm an advocate of sticking to it. I'm going to go a little bit off track, but, and Chase is going to be tired of me saying this. We're ready to launch these magnificent pickleball courts, right? They're awesome. On budget, it's been beautiful. My bugaboo in the whole Harmony Park area is the restrooms. They're not in good shape. They're in terrible shape. Took pictures and sent them. So here we are, spending a lot of money on pickleball, drawing people there, and we're not going to be significantly improving that, other than a couple of things, Chase, we talked about. So on the one hand, we have a big time need over here for restrooms. And oh, by the way, we don't have that over where the park, the pool is. Those are beautiful, and we're all proud of those. So to go over budget over here, and yet not address kind of a something that's really a big concern to the whole community, I have a big time problem with. It's not apples and oranges, but it's being fiscally responsible. So whether it's two or three, I could go either way. I guess I'm more an advocate of option two.
Yes, Dennis.
I don't know why anybody's not talking about option one. One is, um, the kiddie pool needs to be redone, not maintained, not repaired. It just needs to be tear out and get, this is the time to do it. Two, whether I liked it or not, back in 2021 or '22 when this thing first got kicked off, we've been talking and promising the citizens of this town a slide for at least, I don't know how many years. I mean, if I got it in 1922 as a council, excuse me, 2022 as a council person, that means the park board had been talking about it for a couple of years. So that's important to me. I think that, I don't want it, I couldn't care less, but I think it's important we provide the town with the pools. We do have shade structures out there, maybe not a lot, maybe we don't have rentable cabanas and stuff like that, okay? But to me, a shade structure doesn't mean tearing up concrete to put plumbing and getting the, getting the infrastructure inputted the first time out. So I'd like to have somebody talk about option one. I didn't like option, I, I liked option two because it removed the slide and I couldn't care less about it. I liked option three because I didn't really understand the kiddie pool until I listened to some of the park board tonight. And, um, I liked, you, you almost had me convinced on option four, but I'm sorry, I, I can't go over budget. I mean, that's just, I go along with Ryland on over budget. So, um, I'd like somebody to talk about option one and doing shade structures later, or piecemeal. All right, thank you.
Yeah, the straight, the shade is the only big thing for me for option one.
Oh, yeah.
Because again, again, I've never had anybody tell me they wanted a slide, but I sure have heard a lot about shade.
The shade is what gives people.
But we all have a different experience talking to people too.
And I, yeah, and I think we all get different opinions too, from the community.
Yeah.
Okay, go back to the board members. If you didn't have option four, what would you choose?
While you're thinking about that, board, could I ask one more quick question? Back to one, what was the budget on that one, two, just over $2 million?
Yeah, a little over. $2,64,000.
Yeah. And so what's the remainder that we would have of $100,000?
About 21,000.
Not enough to do any real shade?
Correct.
But there's already some shade out there, it's not like we're, okay.
Okay, I, I go back. If you can't have number four, which it sounds like you're not going to get number four, I'm just getting ready to tell you. What, what, uh, what would you, what would you go on?
So Mayor, I'll, I'll just, I'll answer your question. I would probably look at option two as well. But if, you know, if, if I was a resident, I would probably be looking at that once it's all said and done. And say, okay, we invested, you know, $1.8 million, but what really changed?
I agree. Wow. Go ahead.
So, uh, I'm going to echo Steve's point about general magnets in all parks, not just Harmony, but I go to Harmony. Also, we have to realize this pool's used three and a half months out of the year. Harmony Park's used how many months out of the year? So again, going over budget and spending money on something that could be put elsewhere, to Steve's point, doesn't make sense to me. You know, and again, option two, it gets you four out of five of the top desired items, according to Chase. So for the community to come back and say we didn't do anything that they desired, that's not true. We gave them four out of five of what they asked for in budget. So that's my input.
And what, and once you choose not to put the slides there, it will be very costly to go back and put slides in. Correct?
Correct.
Well.
Yeah.
And by the way.
The term very costly or costly?
It'll be more costly than it is today, you can know, you know that for sure.
But, um, I went and looked at, uh, and viewed some of the, uh, over the last several years, because this has come up several times. And every time I go back to some of the park board videos, okay? And our, one of our current council persons, uh, did vote for the slide as a park board member. And it was a very, um, you know, it's a good discussion back then of it. So we've been, okay, I'm just saying, we've been talking about a slide for a long time and promising this is.
Okay, I would like to hear, wait, wait just a minute, please. I would like to hear from Stacy or Jeff. Y'all are listening, what are your, what are your comments, please, your input?
I'll jump in here real quick.
Thank you.
I'm a fan of being under budget, but I'm also a fan of listening to what our residents are asking for. If you look at the age demographic, you know, 21% are ages six to 12. Those are kids that cannot go to Hawaiian Falls unsupervised. But they can go to our pool with a parent and enjoy something that they've asked for. I'm also a proponent of not having to come back and do something twice. And if we're going to invest in something, we need to do it right the first time, not come back twice over and, and have to redo something. Or, you know, you turn over the council, you turn over the park board, and they want to come back and invest money somewhere else. I realize going over budget is not financially frugal, but we do have a little extra money that we need to spend. I just think we should take into account what the residents have asked for. That's, I, I don't know. I'm a proponent of four, but that's, that's kind of where I'm sitting, but I could be persuaded, maybe.
Jeff?
For me, I was originally a proponent of three. And, uh, I think I've been dissuaded. And, you know, I didn't realize that we still had the bond money from '23 that hadn't been dedicated. And I know 18% is a lot to go over, but I think I would support number four.
Okay. Are there other comments? Gary, would you like to say something?
Yeah, just one general comment. You know, you take, take the slides out of the picture, you're kind of removing a demographic of the teens in, in the really aging out of this pool at an earlier age. So that's something to consider. That, now granted, they can go to Hawaiian Falls, if, if they want to go, that's an option, at a higher price point. But if we want to provide that resource for that age demographic of our community, then I think the slides need to be considered.
Has this conversation changed any of the park board's opinions on what they would vote for?
I, sorry, it hasn't changed mine.
No, I understand.
What, what is the age that you can come to our pool without a parent?
14.
14.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Dennis had a good question there.
So basically, we've, we've discussed it, we've had some opinions, and very varied opinion. Everybody, everyone's been, had a different opinion. But it's, but, so after the conversation, have we changed anybody's minds?
No.
All right.
Yep.
I, I, I don't, I haven't told later on tonight, but, um, I appreciate what you had to say. And, um, I, uh, number four may be the way to go. I hate to do that, I need to.
Even from two to one to four.
Before we, before we let y'all go, because we have a, we have an item later to take action and do whatever. Just walk y'all through. So I've evolved, we had our first kid in 2012, I was first one, sworn into council in 2014. The splash pad side of the facility was open in, what, 2011? So I've graduated from infant to toddler to little kid, to middle sized kid, to Hawaiian Falls age kid, to building a pool in the backyard. And I've been involved in some level of this, most of the time throughout it. And, um, the aggregate of my, my experience with people I've interacted with at the pool, away from the pool, personally, et cetera, still leaves me at option two, only because, I understand people gave feedback and really wanted slides. But we're making a decision to get into the slide business. And there are other places that ha, are in the slide business already. So we're not just talking about a one-time decision, we're talking about a multi-decade decision at that point. And given that this is the, this is what we're looking at price-wise, and also needing to focus on making sure we maintain the amenities we have and provide the adequate amount of shade, to ensure that we get a broad set of users and more frequent users, that's why I still favor option two. But, you know, we've, we'll be back on it in an hour or so, and we'll see where we go.
I got a, I got a quick question. With the slides, we have to have more, add more lifeguards?
We will have more lifeguards, um, but within our current lifeguard structure, we're able to support that within our salaries and everything.
So are we going to, is it going to go up?
Lifeguards on rotation?
Yeah, I mean.
On rotation, yes.
You're going to have one at the top, one at the bottom?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
And I also, we're going to leave one thing here. That is, phase two was approved by council and it included the slide. And we stopped it. So it's already been approved once, and it was a go, and then it got pulled out.
Well, that's because budgets changed. We just can't say we pulled it out for no reason. The numbers changed, which got, led to this discussion.
I just, I'll disagree with that, but.
Oh, I, I held my, I held all of my spiel on no slides for the purpose of getting out earlier, when we approved it because it was under budget.
All right, so we're going to, uh, any other comments from our board? I want to again say thank you for your participation.
Would you like them to make a recommendation?
Oh, yes, we do. Absolutely. That was what I was leading up to, Jennifer, thank you.
You're good, you're good. Okay, I would like to do a motion for a recommendation for option four. Of the pool. All right. All in favor? Okay. All opposed?
Two.
Two, two, okay, thank you. Okay, I just want to again, thank you very much, Jennifer, thank you again for the board. I just want to again remind you that the boards make recommendations, they work very hard at vetting, listening, and doing all this stuff that we're doing right now, many, many times over. And, uh, they also tend to have the greatest contact with our community. Our community is growing, and it's not growing, but it's growing with children. We are a family, a, a community of families. And as the mayor, I am just blown away how many children are in our town who want to be a part of the town, as does do the families. And so I think the opportunity to offer to the community and to those who choose and want to move to Trophy Club, to have a great place to come and gather with their families and so forth, is an opportunity for this town. So honestly, I'm going to say I'm, I would love to see option four, because it puts us in a really beautiful place for another environment for gathering of families. Families, it's families, boys. I mean, we live in a town of families. It, are you, do you agree with that? Shake your head up and down.
I, I agree with the first part, or the second part, not the first part.
Well, shake it up and down.
Which part? Are we on the boat on which part?
Mayor, my wife, my wife and I are not having any kids.
But I, I'm, but it's a wonderful town. And, and honestly, the truth is, I go around and people say, I want to live in Trophy Club, I want to live in Trophy Club. Do y'all ever hear that? Raise your hand out there.
All the time.
All the time. And so thank you very much, Chase. Again, thank you, your board, for bringing to us a great options and the work you did.
Definitely.
Thank you.
It is 701, and I'm, uh, Jen, uh, I'm closing this meeting.